Okay, everyone, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to do our town hall meeting. What we do, we have one of these about every six months. The staff will give their reports on what they have completed in the last six months. And we'll have a few minutes for questions. And so I want to start with the report. So I want to thank the Boys and Girls Club for letting us be here tonight. I think we need to give them a round of applause.[33.11][33.11][applause] In my report tonight, in the last six months, some of the things that we have completed in the city is, six months ago, we opened up the flyover. I don't know if any of y'all have been able to get on the flyover, but it was quite an accomplishment. We have begun the downtown parking deck. We started that last month, which will help with the parking situation in the downtown We have started recycling for over 2,000 apartments in the city in the last six months. Fifty new businesses are involved in our glass recycling program. On the sidewalk program, we have completed 21,500 feet so far this year, which is a record for the city. We are starting construction real soon on a new recycling and trash center. We opened up the regional park bids in January next month, and we'll start the construction of the new regional park probably on toward spring or summer. We gave away 750 trees at a tree giveaway in October. This is something that y'all will be really interested in. Rookel Road begins probably, what do you think? Chris, spring?
Spring to mid next year, yes.
Spring to summer, we'll start Rookel Road. I thought you said, yes. Trails, we have completed 3.5 miles of trails, 2.5 miles of bike lanes. Zion Road is supposed to start in the spring. Fritz Gieseler and Doug Lanston, we received two Emmys for Recycle Something, a national award. So that was quite in the top, so we'll talk a little more about that. We established our emergency system. I'm sure you've all gotten a few calls on the severe weather if you've signed up. That's a real good program. Animal shelter euthanasia rate has dropped from 14 percent down to less than 10. So in the last six months. We implemented the PACE program, first one in the state of Arkansas, the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, which will hopefully eventually allow homeowners to use their property assessed clean energy, where you can borrow basically against your property tax and be able to weatherize your home, which only you will realize more savings in the first year than what it will increase in your property sector. That's a real good program. We haven't got it implemented for residential right now, but everything with the federal government, we've got to wait on them on some of the go-ahead to do that. So that's some of the things we completed in the last six months. We're going to take department head reports now, and they will give you presentations on what they have done and what they will be doing in the near future for 2015. So we start with Terry on the end, Terry, go transportation.
Like I said, we're gonna take a little break while we're done, and we're gonna talk about what we do for snow removal and snow routes and things like that. So what we put together this year, we counted to five of the different cities in six different zones. All we do is put crews out of each of those zones, which is how important that we have. And I think this will be a better way for us to stay in capital, where we've been, where we're going, where we did together. So making sure the red routes here, this kind of, they didn't have the whole city, kind of the center line, north and south, it's a 71. We hit those herds, we always try and clear it where you've got somewhere to go, if you can hit you at the house, you have somewhere to go safely. You may potentially hit the grocery stores, the Walmart. And what we do, we break it down, you and Herb are in the area, we've got six different ones. And it shows a little more detail, we've got to break it down, it's more available through the map, and that's not a truck. This is just a ride throughout the city that's out in 16. And then you broke it out, and several of them are, I guess, on the way to Walmart. But you can see, they're supposed to go through their green routes, and get those next, and then they're going all the way to the next one after that. This, we're going to work, we're getting a GPS system, and we're just pull off this on that screen, and say we're all very well located in the market. This is kind of in a 25% format, GPS, this year, till we get together and put it together. But we'll take this in an aisle to add, where we're passing these books, and through the crew, we run three of the outships. And we'll set there and pass the book from first shift to the second, and remember where the previous shift has been. And then once we get to GPS, we'll be able to track that to them, and where. This is just going to happen to the same people that were just building this. And then this is some of the ways that we manage, manage the, we've got a software in general, and software in the shop area. And what this is, is we've got salt in this, we have a bucket of salt in here, we're gonna flush water through it. And you can flush that water through it. We dump it in this top front part right here, the salt, it's all cleaned out right now. We dump that in there, flush the water through it, there's a tank up in the back right there, the whole of the alley around the salt run. This will make 34,000 gallons an hour easily. And what we do is, we pump from that tank into our trucks. And they consist of trucks like this, this is some of the smallest, three quarters times, a tank in the back, and you see it moving down to the bottom there, it's spraying. You see the little white lines all over town, and we've been furnishing the salt. If we're not gonna get rain ahead of that, then we go out and do that. The fact we had a football game, and there were different snow, we treated heavily all of the town, which was actually 8,000 people in town, and it slipped and slide out, but we had most everything through the part of that, and then the snow, the next day, a little bit, and the only place I saw any people was on the little big flyover, and it's only where we can trip going, so we're gonna make sure it's warm. This is another example, side view, some of these are our three and four, right down the thing, we've got some others of the five vehicles, and they're all around trucks. And we've got belly boughs, probably have written a lot about that in the highway department. They'll be looking to buy in belly clouds, and they're getting ready to buy two more, that'll be here for next year. They're mounted in, and the truck, you see the little arms underneath the truck right there? You tilt that down, and then it clouds like a bird, and then we manage these, they will cut through the ice, and they had all the ice and snow last year. This is, this is a grader, with many things, I was getting it off quickly. You'll take it all the way to the hay. And you've got the weight of the vehicle that's forcing down on it, or your front piles on other trucks. They're more pushing, and they're lighting over, that takes it down, but I've got the engine, it's a grader, and they get all the way off. They're just not heavy enough to do that. This is one of our spreader trucks, we've got two trucks from this, this size, and we've got more dump trucks, and they're back here, rid of it. We dump the salt, and load things in that, which either the salmon, or else smaller ways, all heavily ground. And we'll put that in, and go in and mix that. And then we'll mix that, load it in the truck, and go out. This adds a lot of traction, and we can go with that on the model with this. Four of that, and a lot of streets in town, and if you can't get down where we've been, and we can get these trucks up and down, off the trail, and hang, point you in all those streets, and this is kind of one of the ways. We have no traction, it's gonna do it in a force-based scenario. We back that, that'll spread the check on the truck, so that we can find, you know, that one. Most sections have a road here. There's just another view that shows some clouds, another one from, trying to be clear of it. That, I wonder, is a lot of our shit, he pictured it, it's a block avenue, and that point, eleven, when we had that, it was almost twenty inches of snow. So that's kind of what it looks like, we plowed that, and it was a side, cars are still almost pretty good. There's a street there that people down the way, and we have the plowed, but it's getting made plowed, so you'll see it's out there. But this is kind of our operation, we have a shopyard, this is a loader, really one of those trucks I just showed you, Paul. They kind of love that. This is one of our dump trucks on the plow, and I have four of these, we plowed them this year, we've got two additional ones. That's kind of a preview of what we do, we go out, creature can possibly, kind of about beet juice, we use that next year. When we're using beet juice, it's used by skating, well, freezing temperatures, kind of lowers the temperature of the vine. So contrary, when we're spraying water on the street, when it's starting to get dirty, it's actually helping, just to kind of pre- that, because it won't freeze it down around fifteen, if you just got the salt. And then, it's kind of a little bit of that.
Any questions on that, or? Okay. Jeremy?
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Pate. I'm the Development Services Director for the city of Fayetteville. Wanted to give an update on the parking garage construction. I'm the project manager for that project, been working on it for almost a year now. It's been several, many years actually, in discussion. And in October, the city council approved a final contract to move forward with that project, and it began to begin construction. The location's behind the Wal-Mart Center, at the intersection of Spring and School Street, kind of across from the Hyrolic Recycling and that area. After a few stops and starts in 2014, due to some design and funding challenges, I'm sure a lot of you read about or heard about, we were happy to get that project moving in October. It consists of about 240 space parking garage, that will serve not only Wal-Mart Center patrons, but anyone visiting the downtown Dixon Street area that is looking for public parking. It also has a three-story office space that will house the Wal-Mart Center staff, and also their back-of-house facility. One of their, one of their parts of their expansion, that they're, that kind of growing currently, one of their needs for expansion was back-of-house facilities, essentially to stage a lot of their equipment and personnel, be able to have changing rooms they use at. The Star Theater, which is an existing theater, they use a lot of that for storage right now, in order just to stage some of the larger shows that they're able to produce. And so this will allow for a lot of that area, in the basement of this three-story building attached to the parking deck, for them to be able to expand and have even larger shows come to Wal-Mart Center for Fayetteville citizens and visitors. It'll also have two floors of office space, to replace the buildings that we removed. Parking deck will sit on a site where their offices were located, and so it will replace that space and allow for some expansion as well. Total construction cost for this project is a guaranteed maximum price by our contractor. We have a construction manager, Baldwin Shell, for this project. It's not to exceed a little over $10.5 million. It's a one-year construction contract, so we'll be finished with the parking deck in October of 2015. In October of this year, we began excavation and demolition of that office building. We took out in excess of 1,269 dump truck loads of material out of the site in the excavation process, which was quite a, quite a sight to see. It took about six, six excavator loads to actually fill a dump truck, and they were gone. So they were doing many, many of those today. We fortunately did not find any unexpected rock, did not hit any rock, did not hit any bad soil, so we're exactly where we need to be, not on wood, so some plastic of some sort, and we'll continue to do that. We're now well into our second major task, excavation is completed. Our second major task was the drilling of the piers. This parking deck will sit on 44 individual piers that are drilled three feet into bedrock. The bedrock's about 20 feet down, below the excavated level. As of the end of today, we've completed 30 of those 44, so we're well on our way, hopefully, to finish this up by Monday of next week, which would put us a few days ahead of schedule, actually. And then we'll begin footing and foundation work by Christmas. As I mentioned, they're about, average about 20 feet of depth for each one of these piers. The average bedrock is deeper on one side than it is the others, so some are a little more, some are a little less, but things are going well there as well. So barring unexpected occurrences within, within this particular construction period, this is sort of the part that is the most unknown, underground. We did a lot of soil tests and a lot of borings before construction, but you sort of never know what you're gonna get until you get into it, but so far, so good. So we're on schedule to begin walls in January, so you start seeing steel being erected, and actual construction coming out of the ground in January and February. And it takes about three to four months actually to pour the slabs, so between March and May, we'll be pouring the actual slabs of the, of the four-level parking garage, with the completion date of October 2015.
Any questions on that? Everybody good? Okay. Paul, you want to give your financial report?
Good evening. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Paul Becker, I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the city of Fayetteville. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the budget. Budget has been approved for 2015. Total operating budget's $145 million. Now that's up $9 million, higher than last year, about 6 percent. Most of that increase is in the capital project funds, especially in water and sewer, where we're undertaking several new projects. The capital portion of the increase is $7 million, the operational portion, about $2.6 million. So most of that increase for next year is in the, in the capital programs. And we have 22 separate funds in the city, versus 22 separate buckets of money, and each of them has a specific purpose. The two largest ones are the Water and Sewer Fund, which is $39 million, and the General Fund, which next year will be $38.1 million. Within the overall budget, about a third, 33 percent, of the total budget is for personnel costs. The city is very labor-intensive, most of the things we do require the input of people to service people for many, many services that we offer. So the largest part of that is, in fact, personnel costs. The other largest percent is, about 15 percent of it is the capital part of the program. So between those two, that's about 50 percent of your budget, right there. Now normally, you'll hear me talk about the General Fund. The reason I say on the General Fund is, that's where any discretionary funds may be. That's also where the most labor-intensive part of our budget is. General Fund funds police, funds fire, city services such as IT, accounting, the court system, parks, things of that nature. Now that is very labor-intensive. About 82 percent of the $38 million is spent on personnel costs. So that's where most of our city services are concentrated for you. Now that increase is about 2.6 percent up from last year. So we feel that that's pretty well in line. One thing I talk about quite frequently, that I've quoted on, is the sales tax revenue. Sales tax revenue funds 60 percent of the General Fund, so you can see we're very sensitive to that. 60 percent of the General Fund's revenue is generated by sales tax, that's why you'll see people concentrating on it, reported on a monthly basis by me at the council and in the newspaper, to the citizens. So if you want a barometer of how we're doing revenue-wise, that's, that's a place that you'll, you'll want to keep an eye on. Overall, moving forward, as we get into the first quarter of this year, we'll bring out all the capital projects which aren't included currently in this year's budget. These are remaining projects from the current year. It'll total about $60 million, so our overall city budget, once adjusted, will be in the $200 million range. Right now, revenues for this year, they're a little soft on the sales tax side. However, we do have some additional revenue over in building permits, and franchise fees are up a bit, so I think we're gonna balance out pretty well. And this year, we'll be pretty close to what expected in revenue, and I think the expenditures will be pretty close to what our expectations were. So I would say, right now, I feel very, very confident about next year's budget, next year's budget estimates, and the magnitude of next year, and we'll see what happens moving forward.
Okay. Any questions for Paul on finances? Please.
As the mayor mentioned it, let me follow up. Fritz, is that Neil back there? Who are we have? Okay, we have Neil Bilby, and we have Steve Odom, we have Fritz Gieseler, and we have Doug Batson back there. Just gonna give a shout-out for our Media Services crew. They put this in all of the meetings, at least like 30 meetings a month, on the government channel. We also stream live, or stream, and have an archive of meetings. We load on the internet, on the internet, you can go on there if there was a meeting from two years ago, that you wanted to see again, just 'cause you really liked that meeting, you can go on our website and watch that, watch that meeting. They do an excellent job, as the mayor mentioned. Doug, if you raise your hand, Fritz, raise your hand. They just won an Emmy for the city, for their work on the Recycle Something campaign. One thing Media Services does is, we work on various campaigns for various departments, have a lot of really great staff. I mean, I know the mayor praises his staff all the time in a lot of the various departments, and it truly is amazing what our staff do in-house, every day, for the community. Very, very smart minds, hard-working individuals. And so they're actually leading the team with our recycling and trash collection crew on a Recycle Something campaign, that's been very successful over the last, really, year and a half, two years now. And had another video, public service announcement on Recycle Something, that just came out in the, in the last week. So we have on our website, now, how many of you have gone to the city's website, seeing information? Yeah, good. How many of you went to the website five years ago? If you remember it. One thing that we did, before Mayor Jordan came into office, he pulled a large group from the community together, and he sought some input. And one of the things that was a recurring thing was, fix the website, make the website better, put some information on the website, you know? And it was, it was good, but the reality was, it was a very, very outdated, what's called a content management system. And I didn't know much about content management systems, except, you know, in the past two years. Essentially, the lowdown on that is that it is the engine, it is the performance mechanism for websites. I'll give another shout-out for all of our employees, all of the departments. It truly, truly is amazing what these staff have done with this 20-year-old system and that website. They have squeezed everything out of it. And we have won awards on the website. We have gotten a lot of kudos from people. People look at the website as it is today, and they say, wow, that's one of the best websites that's out there. That's a lot of staff work on there. If you knew the underbelly or underneath what they were working with, or how long it takes something to actually get online, once you post it, how certain things might only be able to be posted if they're in alphabetical order, how many, I mean, it was, it's just a horribly difficult system to work with. Well, in the last year, the city council appropriated funds for a new content management system. I mean, just even imagine what the internet was like, or capabilities, over the past 20 years, what's been done. So we're excited as staff, and I know you're gonna be excited as a community, I think, with the new website, which we plan it should be launching in March of next year. One thing that staff has been doing overall, really particularly in the last two years, is taking the website from where it was, listening to the community, and making it much more audience-centered, and as user-friendly as possible. But with these new content management systems, what's amazing is, the way they are set up, you can have it if you're on your iPad, if you're on your home computer, that same system, and it's in these like little boxes and things, 'cause it allows you, if you have an iPhone, it just collapses all into one. And so it's readable, with a lot of different technologies that the people use. Those are the new systems. It's really great to have the city, in terms of our website, become more modern, have more capabilities, have more audience-centered aspects to it. We'll still have a lot of the main things that people say that they want right there, say on the homepage. We are gonna be wording them different, so, so, such as, you know, government services, community, business, but like a category, how do I? There's a lot of people thinking those terms, like, how do I get a permit? How do I, you know, in those terms? And then wording them in those ways, so hopefully it will be easier to find the information as well. We have a very strong social media program at Fayetteville. And our Media Services heads our YouTube channel, we have Twitter, we have Facebook, we have a lot of various ways to meet the public. So we'll be, I think, to do even more with that, with this, with the new content management system kicks in. So it's, it's really exciting. There are things that we can also add in here that the public's asked for, like perhaps a picture archive, or just so many things. It's truly unbelievable what we're gonna be able to do with the new website. Mayor also asked me to mention to you the Fayetteville Alert System that we have. And I encourage you to sign up for the Fayetteville Alert System. Right now, on our website, is at the top, you just click on it, and then you can get the emergency alerts. But it's not just for emergency alerts. You can sign up pretty much for anything. If you wanna know, I wanna know the road and lane closures, I wanna receive the quarterly newsletter, I want to, you know, what are the events coming up? I wanna receive by email all copies of press releases. You know, you can sign up, and you can select what information you would like to receive. It's been very positive with the community. I think the one thing, you know, when people call, when they sign up for road closures or lane closures, we do usually get calls back and say, oh, I'm gonna get off of that one. Because they truly are amazed how many infrastructure projects go on in the city. They're not just city projects, but a lot of private projects. Somebody might need to have a lane closed on their street, just because they're having somebody come to cut trees in that particular area. So there are a lot of lane closures that, that happen. But I do encourage you, please do sign up for the alert system. It is something, again, that the city council appropriated funds for, is a way truly to, to know what is going on in terms of, you know, particularly the emergencies. Information right to the T. I know Chief David Dayringers, our fire chief, I know, as he always seems to tell us, preach to us all the time, is, you know, it's not just about knowing that an emergency is coming, but to plan ahead for emergencies. And I wanna echo some of the things, I think Sue may be talking about this as well, things I learned when working at the city, such as, you know, have water, or a, what a blanket, or the things that you need, the package that you need even in your car. You, you don't know how many times you might get stranded somewhere. So do think ahead, and there is that information on our website about that, how you can pre-plan for emergencies, what you need in your home. Emergency paperwork, when Katrina came, a lot of people, really, when you're without your identification, it's really hard to get your kids signed back up in school, or get, get really started again. So there's also that knowing, having your identification, having it in a certain place where if you need to flee from your house, that you can grab it, grab it quickly. One thing I wanted to lead into with that is, I learned about this actually from a firefighter, Jeremy Ashley's wife, had, she's a teacher, and she had brought me to see these kids, and they had come up with this idea, and they had information that you put on a card. What are your medicines, what are your medical conditions, or what are your allergies, medical insurance, a lot of this information. And they said, put this on your refrigerator, 'cause the police and the firefighters, ambulance, they're trying to go to your refrigerator first, so that they can best treat you. 'Cause some people can just call, and then some, they may become incapacitated in some way, but they can't answer the questions, maybe when the safety person- but they can't answer the questions, maybe when the safety personnel come. Well, the Attorney General's Office has sort of souped up this type of thing. It's called the File of Life, and I have several over here, and they have a magnet on the back. And you might know somebody that this would be helpful for. The, the police, the firefighters, emergency crews, they know to go look at that refrigerator, and then see what this is. And imagine if they could take this out and then treat you with the best care having that. So, they're free, they're over the side. If you have a facility, say, a hospital, a church, or where you wanna get several of these, you can literally, you can call, like I did, I called the Attorney General's Office and I said, these are great. I'm gonna keep some in my purse, I'm gonna get them out to people, I drop them off at doctor's office. I said, y'all, y'all have to have these. But you can call and say, I'd like a box of these for my business and whatever, and you can, you can have those. They truly, it truly does help provide, help for information provided from you. Last, I wanna mention a thing called My Fayetteville Services. Our GIS is unbelievable. Have me, have you, anybody in here dealt with any of our mapping systems or online capabilities? Super, isn't it? Just truly amazing. It's not just about what ward do I live in, or what, I mean, it truly, some collapse, maps collapsing to other collapse, uh, maps. And you truly can find out so much information. And we have, the new website also have a feature where, just like the website we have today, where, where you can just directly go to all the maps that we have. But My Fayetteville Services is something, it stemmed from taking both our neighborhood programs and community resource programs, linking it in with our mapping staff, and coming up with this thing called My Fayetteville Services. What are those questions that the neighborhoods, that the residents and businesses, what do they want to know? And let's put it in a mapping form. It is so cool, and I hope you go on there. If you go on the homepage, you'll see something called My Fayetteville Services. Click on that, and it'll just have you press enter to go into it. Well, once you're in there, you can, up in the search feature, you can put in your address, or any address, or you can just go to the map and click on a destination. Once you do that, there's gonna, you're gonna be able to know what ward that house is in, if it's in a flood plain or not, who are the elected officials for that area, how is it zoned? What are the closest schools? Where would, if you had a child and you bought that house, where would they go to school? You can find, you can, you can see, it'll show up, it'll show you what the closest trails are. And then you hit this little feature in it, and then it'll show you the map to get to the trailhead, to get on that trail. It'll do the same thing for parks, where are the closest parks to where that location is? Where's the closest, where's the police station from there? What's the closest fire department from there? So, there's a lot of really great information on there at your fingertips. So, if you say, wow, here's a resident, I need to know who the city council member is for that house, and I wanna know if it's zoned a particular way, go on My Fayetteville Services, and within sixty seconds, you'll be able to answer those questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Linsley on this? Yes?
Yes, I do. If I can back up to recycle program.
Yes.
This has been something in my, in my mind for a long now. Is there plans in the future to install a glass recycling?
We actually, we.
That question.
Yeah, we have a, and Terry could really go into that probably best, better than me. We have an amazing pilot that's down on Dixon Street.
Where, where are you talking about? Glass recycling.
And we recycle glass.
That we love to recycle, is there some where we can take it?
Yes, we've got two recycling drop-off centers. One's located on North Street between Greg and Leverett.
Okay.
There's one there, they take glass amongst all, all kinds of other things. And then there's also one down at our Public Works area, down off Happy Hollow and Fifteenth Street. There's another recycling drop-off there. You can do that. And one of the things we're doing with our grass, with glass recycling program, as we started one, well, it's almost two years ago now, on Dixon Street with some of the businesses, it was a volunteer thing. We went from collecting a quarter ton of glass a week with about six or eight businesses, to now we collect over four ton a week. And we've expanded that even out around some of the restaurants, out towards the mall area and in the wing. So, we're continuing to do that. We'll, we'll look to continue to expand that even more in the future. But that's where you can, you know, if you've got some you wanna just take in, those are the two locations.
Yeah, if you have large, also in your residential, I mean, that's what, you know, we do on Tin, we do our glass in our residential, and it takes it. One thing about the Dixon Street one, I'll add on to that, you know, the bars, the restaurants, putting all that glass that was used to go like into a landfill, now with this particular program, massive amount of glass they're getting. And then having that sent off and corning turns it into insulation. And I believe it's like a hundred, a hun, no, what is it? Like ten bottles make up like two cavities worth of insulation. And what they do, it goes back into Habitat for Humanity to help house, I mean, to help keep houses warm for those who need it. So, it's really, you know, if I told people, I said, you know, if you drink something out of a bottle down on Dixon Street, you're helping keep somebody's house warm this winter.
Well, glass, here's mostly recycled.
Yeah.
And one little question about, you mentioned about lane closures and my services. Is there someplace on there, I explore, I explore, is there someplace on there where you can report a pothole?
Oh, please, yes. In fact, in the future, we'll be calling it reported concern. But right now, it's over to the left-hand side, what's in called Quick Links, and we just love it when people do that, 'cause, 'cause it's so important that we hear from you, 'cause we can't just go and find every pothole, you know, you know. And it's, what do we word it? Oh, request for services is the wording that we have on right now. And when you go into it, I mean, it's even something like, oh, I can't stand the barking dog next door. You know, it's even, I'm gonna report a barking dog, or a pothole, or there's a limb down on a trail or something.
Well, there's one for two of that spot, off of Garland and Sycamore. Really, I'm, I'm so afraid of it, 'cause I'm playing with a bug on the tire. It's got really sharp objects sticking up high in the middle of it.
And that's why we have town hall meetings, 'cause Terry just wrote that down.
Consider every.
Yeah, it's it. It's submitted.
And I go there early, early in the morning, I know where it's at, and I'm like, I can't get that spot.
So, this is on Sycamore?
It's on Sycamore.
Near Garland.
But if you turn off the alarm, it's on the eastbound.
All right. We'll take care of it tomorrow.
You brought the, the request for services? I use that actually quite bad. The only thing is, sometimes there are things that override emergency, and you require something from that. You do have like a, a roof, and then.
It's great.
Because I recently did it, and there was nothing in there.
Perfect.
I just put something in.
Thank you.
And then made a description.
Thank you.
It'd be nice to have others.
Love it.
That doesn't fit any of those categories. And then required, absolutely required, description.
Super.
Need to expand the list. More choices.
Just the other. Yeah.
Other, other choices.
It's a limited list, if you just say, if it doesn't fit there, then hit other. But I would say, if you have them, hit other.
It's a good idea.
You require them to put in the description.
Yeah.
Do you understand?
Yes.
Yeah.
Especially locations and.
Well, there's a description of the problem. So, when they hit other, automatically you have the color, and you have the whole problem.
Thank you.
That's just the situation.
That's good.
Y'all have used the website, though, it's vastly improved, or, I mean, it's a lot, is it easier, you find?
I like it, yeah. Because they, like I said, there's a lot of stuff, like stairs over to here, and it was put out with a problem in it.
Okay.
Better than address or whatever. But like, I just did it last week. There was nothing that could fit.
Yeah.
And wouldn't they nicely be had, like other capital?
Right.
So, I just, I'm like, well, shoot, somebody, and then describe the problem.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Hopefully you really love it in March. Hopefully you really love it in March. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chris, you want to go ahead and give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
This room's about eight-thirty, I just wanted, so we can, go ahead.
I'm, uh, I'm Chris Brown, city engineer. I'm gonna talk about the transportation bond program. Some of these projects I'll repeated, I'll be repeating, the mayor stole all my good stuff, so, sorry about that.
Can you give it more detail?
Mayor loves to talk about infrastructure, we all know that, so. Bond program is about sixty-five point nine million dollars that was approved by voters in two thousand and six. We've leveraged that money with partnerships with the highway department and federal aid funding to over a hundred million dollars of projects that we've done or have in progress. Several projects we've completed. Mount Comfort Road is one that, that was done two, three years ago. A roundabout near Washington Regional, hopefully you guys have all had a chance to go through that, it's kind of fun. And then the Fayetteville Flyover, as the mayor mentioned. And that was a project that, again, we were able to get federal aid funding for. It's about a six-million-dollar construction project, and eighty percent of that was federal aid. So, a small amount of the bond program was able to do a very large project. Under construction right now, we have Van Ash Drive, the extension of Van Ash to create a better connection between Garland Avenue and Greg Avenue. That's, will be completed by mid next year. Couple of highway department jobs, again, we've partnered with them on, on several of these projects and paid part of the cost of the project. Highway sixteen east, Happy Hollow to Stone Bridge is under construction, be completed in the spring. And then Razorback Road on the university campus up to Leroy Pond is under construction as well. Twenty fifteen, we have several projects planned for construction. The historic bridges on Maple and Lafayette, that's a federal aid project. It's taken us a while to get through the federal aid process, as it normally does. But that's a project we'll, by mid twenty fifteen, we'll have under construction. And those, those bridges will be improved, cleaned up, repaired, and will look much better, but will retain their historic character. Another project is the intersection of Old Wire and Mission. We'll be signalizing that intersection and making some improvements there. As the mayor mentioned, Zion Road to Crossover Road is another project that will widen, be widened, have some turn lanes, sidewalks, and bike lanes on, on that, to kind of finish the job what we did there in front of Lowe's several years ago. Again, as the mayor mentioned, right outside our door here, the Rupel Road Extension is planned for next year. It will extend from Al Creek South down to Highway sixty-two to MLK. That project will, will begin next year. We also are looking at widening the segment out here, the existing segment, to four lanes up to Weddington. And lastly, construction next year on campus again, Maple Street between Garland and Razorback. So, that, that segment of Highway one twelve, again, we're partnering with the highway department with federal aid funding. We also have some design projects that are, will continue to move forward in two thousand and fifteen. Old Wire Road, designed really for Mission all the way to Stanton. We've got a couple of phases of that project that will occur in the coming years, but the design of that will begin next year. Rupel Road, north of here at Mount Comfort Road, that intersection, if you guys have been through that, you know, it's kind of a, I call it substandard, it's really just kind of a strange intersection. Y'all, y'all have seen that, I'm sure. Nobody knows who's supposed to go where or anything. But anyway, that's a, that's a federal aid project as well, so we're designing on it. It's probably gonna be twenty sixteen before we can get to construction on it, again, because of the federal aid and the timeframe. And then lastly, College Avenue, we're going to be looking at extending the sidewalk project that we did in the downtown area, so north from Maple Avenue all the way to Sycamore. Working on the design next year for construction in twenty sixteen. So, that's gonna be a very, very big project, it's one that we get a lot of requests for, to extend that project. So, really looking forward to moving forward with it. And lastly, these aren't bond projects, but the highway department, if you, you guys haven't heard, I'm not gonna go through all the interchange projects that are gonna be constructed, but it's all of them. They're gonna be working on every single one of them in the city in the next two to three years. Investing about, about a hundred and ten million is what their estimate is right now for the major interchange and widening projects. Ultimately, it's, it's more than that, if you look region-wise. The plan is to be to six lanes from the MLK interchange all the way to Bentonville. Six lanes with all improved interchanges over the next about ten years. Definitely an investment that we're looking forward to. That's all I have.
We're gonna build the infrastructure. Do you have any questions, Chris, on any of the road projects? Okay. So, who do you have?
Can you do it?
Yeah, sure.
Because I can't sit and talk.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I just come out, I need to see what I learned out of the Fayetteville Fire Department office. Fayetteville Fire Department. I have a personal question for you. I don't definitely, not ask it, it's not very personal at all. What I wanna know is, is there any work from smoke alarm? Red and red. Now, how do you know there's work from?
Test.
No, no, it's why it's smoking. Because, well, it should go off when there is smoke, okay? And when it's, sometimes they're very susceptible, okay? But what we want to make sure is that you do have work from smoke alarm, because that's a very important warning system that you have. It's not a warning system to go look for your car keys or your phone, or, it's a warning system for you to get out, okay? And everybody should, tonight, homework tonight, okay? And I'm gonna know if you didn't do it, all right? Is test your smoke alarm. So, everybody in sequence, when you get home, hit that button. No, and it's very simple, actually, to, to test, okay? You put a, you take a broomstick, and if you don't have a ladder, which most people don't use a ladder, they'll usually use a chair, but I prefer you use a sm, you know, a broomstick, and just hold that test button outside of it, okay? There's a test button on every kind of smoke alarm, and hold it down until it goes off. Now, if you have interconnected ones, then you're gonna hear it throughout the whole house, all right? And that's very important. If you hear this, that, who has kids here too? I, yeah, I met, you said you had kids too. So, the second thing is making sure you can get out of the house, okay? Two ways out of every room, fire escape plan is very important, okay? Who has gas appliances in here? Guys, don't be afraid, it's okay. Okay.
It's not trick question. It's not trick question.
Yeah, it's, it's okay, it's, I know I'm asking a lot, but, you know. It's very important to invest in a CO detector, or carbon monoxide detector, okay? This time of year, the gas is going, the furnace is going, the, the fireplace is going, we got all kinds of candles burning. We have CO in our air right now, that's processed, a little bit. Humans can process a little bit, but when it's too much, that it starts to take the oxygen out of our lungs, and we just kind of slowly, it's not like somebody's choking you, but it just slowly goes out. And that can be caused by a leak, too much CO in the air in your home. You know, once in a while, you have to air it out a little bit. I know it's hard to do at twenty degrees outside, which we haven't hit yet, okay? Well, maybe we have, I don't know. It's still early. But check that, that, that's also, it, they could cost from seven dollars up to seventy-five, okay? And they're worth getting if you have gas appliances. And test them monthly, okay? Like you would just smoke alarm, they have a different sound that goes off, some of them even talk. And if you, if it does go off, guys, don't go look for it, okay? No, it's okay, it's automatic. Everybody wants to go look for it. You can't see it, you can't feel it, you can't taste it, you can't touch it, you know, nothing. No cider, and so, just get out of the house, call nine-one-one, call the fire department, we'll come out. We have tools to tell if you have a leak, we'll air out the place, very important. Don't go looking for it, 'cause you won't find it, and you might collapse. We've had that happen, about, with too much in the air. Put in your budget for next year, or at least now, if you can, hit your furnace checked and your fireplace checked, okay? Worth it. Annual, if you can. Now, because it is the season, we do a lot of heating right now, alternative heating, such as portable. such as portable space heaters, sometimes we do the fireplace, sometimes we have the wood burning stove. It's very important that you take caution with that. Portable space heaters come in electric form, kerosene form, which I recommend for only outside, that's old, that's real old fashioned, actually, if you can't, sell it. Sell your kerosene, because you'll, you'll get more money for it on eBay, okay? And you will for the part of having it at home. It's, they're just very dangerous, and, as, as you know, a lot of times you see them outdoors in big warehouses, they'll use them, because there's more air too out there. But if you have one in your home, I recommend you get an electric one, okay? If you have to have one, get one now, where to have a shut-off valve, but falls off, falls over, or that gets knocked over, it shuts off automatically. Very important. If you have the ones that have the portable space heater, that have those little coils, okay? Well, sell that on eBay too, because those things get knocked over, and they're hot, so immediately they start burning the rug. Don't leave the room with kids in the, in the room with the portable space heater, that's the first thing they go for. And we've had that in the past, not here, but up in Rogers area, that there was five kids in the room, and that was their heating source with the portable space heater, and they played with it, and the carpet, the carpet on fire, pretty soon the part of their living room was on fire. They got out, but they were still playing with it, and that's, that, that was that experience, so, please be cautious, three feet clearance all around it and above it, don't use it to warm up the gloves or anything like that, okay? I have all kinds of brochures and information over there. Our Fire Prevention Week was, you know, test your smoke alarm, so that, I already talked to you about that, here's information on that, doing it monthly, set your, you know, number on your favorite, on the calendar, your favorite number between one and twenty-eighth, mark it on your calendar for the next year, and test your smoke alarm. This is a great brochure on carbon monoxide, it's a little lengthy, but it's lots of information in there, okay? I actually read these, believe it or not, I don't just give them out. Eat it, exit drills in the home, know two ways out of every room, practice that. Especially when you have a lot of company over this time of year, you know, and you have a fire, they're not going to know where to go, okay, so you have to explain that. And fire safety holidays, I got a great brochure over there about, who uses Christmas trees and lights and decorative stuff, you know? Who uses outdoor lights or indoor lights outside? Anybody? I hope not, because that, that's a hazard too. No more than three on its string, okay? It's very strung up. If you have to use a, we prefer you to use the strip cord, you know, with the surge protector, good quality one, not the dollar store version. Makes a difference, these are little steps you can take before, check your lights before you put them on the Christmas tree and decorations. And, you know those beautiful candle holders, now decorated around, put your nice, pretty candle in there? Don't. I know that's where it's far, unless you have protection for that candle. We get busy, those candles burn down, chances are you do not have a flame retardant decoration, okay? Because it costs you a fortune, so they don't even sell them practically. So, you know, you have to be careful with candles, I also have a brochure on that too. Handle with care, that's another one. We at the fire department, you know, we don't mind coming to your house and putting out your fire, we just want you to be able to get out and not have the fire, really, you know? We're there, we're ready, see, they're going right now, you got to call. But it, it's important, what I try to do is prevent, okay? I want, you could take a few steps and just prevent fires, but they're always ready to go if you have one, but, you know, it can be hazardous. So have a good holiday, safe holiday, does anybody, oh, I also have some handouts there, all kinds of goodies and stuff, anybody have any question?
Do you see fire that's going to increase, or do you see it, you know?
Well, it's, it's always increased in the beginning of, of a winter, in beginning of summertime, things like that, where there's, you know, beginning of the year, because we have, the heater going, it starts up, kicks up. The smoke alarms go off because they've been sitting there, and the heater hits that, it's a little go off, and you think, what the heck's this, you know? But it varies, you know, it just, it just depends. I'm hoping to get more people educated on it so that they know to take extra steps. If you're testing your smoke alarm monthly, at least you know you have a warning system. Recommend you change a battery every six months, like in November when we change the time, that's a good time to change the battery. If you're testing it monthly, chances are you know that it's working. If you hear a chirp, which I hope you don't, I hope you change your battery before that, that chirp means to change the battery, it's a little bit of juice left in that battery, and you go, hey, help, I'm, I need to be changed, you know? So it's very important. You know, it, it just, it just varies, it's kind of unpredictable, that's the thing about fire, it is unpredictable. Make sure, you know, if you have younger kids around, or especially this time of year when you have all the kids, and the families talking, and all the kids are around, they're sitting there playing with the, the candles and the lighter, and they're playing around the fireplace, you got to be careful, because they don't know how hot, how dangerous fire is. Any other questions? Greg, question?
Does the city have a fire department program where they go to schools and have students developing fire prevention programs?
Well, when I, I go into schools, I think I have a forty-foot safety trailer that helps smoke house, I'm sorry, that I take it to every school, every elementary, and we go to, you know, kindergarten through third grade, sometimes fourth and fifth, and I talk to them about that, and we have school fire marshals that are assigned, the principals pick, I know what program you're talking about, spring day, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about stealing that idea from them.
Is that why you have every family, every child who's in the house, they have, you know, that, that's a decent evacuation.
Right. Well, and I do have it on the webpage, where you can get, like, our National Fire Prevention Association, it does all the codes for all fire and electrical and fire alarms, and they have a sparky dot com, or sparky dot org, I'm sorry, page, that kids can, you can get a gra, a little floor plan, teaches you how to do it, but yes, sir, do you have a floor plan?
I have a floor plan.
You know how to get up, you know? You have two ways up?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We are lucky, yes, the rule is that they wait up six.
Well, that's, that's what, one thing the fire department did learn, was that you go through the kids, because they'll go home, and they'll whine and yell at mom and dad, hey, you got to do this, fireman says, you know? So that's what we're hoping, and it's going to, you know, for, yes, yes, I go in every school, like I said, we have school fire marshals that also are assigned by the principal from every school, and I give them a special program, and they get to participate in the fire drills, so, and every year it's different kids, it sucks. Somebody have a question over here? Does somebody have a hand up?
No, pivot, Sue, we got this room to about eight-thirty, and Connie, you're reporting, I will take some questions tonight, and then we, we'll go back, we'll take some more questions later.
No problem, sorry.
No, it's.
Good evening, I'm Connie Edmiston, I'm with the Fayetteville Parks and Recreation, very proud to be here, and her city is just an awesome place to live, grow up your family in the quiet, and to work. And with that said, it is the season, and as you all know, and you all have been watching Life for Bill, I'm going to stay. Any idea how many hours it takes us to blow this light up and take it down? A whole of them, shut down.
Long time.
About three thousand in Texas. We put up four hundred thousand volts, pretty close to that, the guy said, they're all LED lights, so we are saving energy with them, so, very proud of that display. Please take your families down there, invite your friends, oh, invite your friends and people from around other states and around the area to come down and wa, and look at the display. We, we did it for you, the city of Fayetteville thinks it's very important to provide that for you, so, anyhow, I'm going to visit with you a little bit about the regional park. The regional park is located off of Cattle Springs Road, which is kind of on the southwest side of our city. If you go off on Cattle Springs Road and turn down Judge Cummings Road, little light on there, ah, right there, that gets you to the regional park. We have two hundred acres right here for the regional park, and then I'm going to show you another map a little bit later, where we have Mount Kessler, which is over here, another three hundred and seventy-five acres, so we have about six hundred acres in all there for you to enjoy. The regional park is something that came up from our master plan in the year two thousand. One thing that our citizens wanted was one place to recreate. They were tired of running all over the city, taking their child to play baseball, or softball, or soccer, they wanted everything in one area, so that's what we did. We have designed a park that has everything in one area. Just this last spring, A, the AMP Commission had a bond that you all voted on, thank you very much, and which provides three point five million dollars for our park, our city has about four point five, so we have about an eight million dollar project to do phase one of the, of the park. The park's going to consist of, at the very top is a great lawn, in which is kind of an area that you gather, there'll be an amphitheater in there, there'll be the parks office someday, a restroom, pavilion, a playground area, and then it leads to our soccer fields, there's eight soccer fields. Currently, our soccer program is held at Lewis Soccer Complex, which is across from Asbell Elementary School, and we have a lease agreement with the University of Arkansas that expires July thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, so that's one reason why we needed to get a place for fifteen hundred kids to play soccer. So we'll be moving that out there. This will also comprise of eight baseball fields, we have around nine hundred, nine hundred plus children playing baseball, and then a, a girl softball complex, which comprises about a good three hundred kids. Then there'll be a trailhead over here, a pavilion, and a restroom, so that can lead you on up to Mount Kessler to enjoy those mini trails. On the southern edge of our park down here, will be, will have, will have tennis courts, sand volleyball courts, and basketball courts, will be all comprised down there, so that'll be its own complex, and over here we'll have our maintenance complex. So that's kind of the whole picture, it's about, close to, right now it's estimated around twenty-eight million dollars to totally build it out, but we're on an eight million dollar, round about phase one. So phase one, what it will do, it's outlined in green, it'll start on the great lawn, we'll build six of the soccer fields, we'll start on the baseball complex, three to four fields of that, to start us off with concession stands and restrooms and everything else. It'll also build the road through, we'll have a road that comes up through there, and eventually our trail system will hook in, and it will be along the border and, and hook into Mount Kessler. This is Mount Kessler that I'm talking about, and right now, you all can park, over here we have parking over in this area, and then there's parking on up this area. We do have the, the towers, the water towers up there, is part of this complex, so, very excited for this to be going, it is out to bid right now, bids are due in January, we'll take the contract to city council in February, and then in March we hope to break ground on it, so we're very, very excited on that.
Six hundred acres.
Yes, over six hundred acres, so, the regional park is, is going to be awesome, hopefully we're bringing a lot of tournaments and, and just provide our families with, and citizens with a great place to go recreate, to be healthy and be active. Of course, I can't come before anybody without saying, we need volunteers in our park, we have several different programs, we have a doctor park, a doctor trail program, and just to, we have a park that's perfect for anybody to go help us remove invasive plants, or to help clean up trails, or to help paint, many projects going on. We also have a few boards that you may serve on, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Urban Forestry Advisory Board, we have the Yvonne Richardson Community Center Board, and then we have numerous, our soccer boards, softball boards, we have boards, citizens that help us organize those events too. But it brings in a lot of money to our city, to have volunteers to help us to do the work, we couldn't do it, we couldn't manage the forty-two hundred acres without your help. So anytime you're interested in having a service project, please give us a call, we'll find a fun project for you. And last but not least, there's many ways to connect with us through Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, so.
Okay, thank you Connie. Okay, now we're just going to take some general questions from the public. All right. Oh, please come to microphone, introduce yourself, and we'll answer what we can, what we don't know tonight, we'll get back to you on, okay? Fair enough. Who'd like to start? Ms. Campbell, I'm sure you would like to, would you like to start tonight?
Well, I, I want to appreciate the mayor and having that town hall meeting like this, and all of you guys did a great job of presentations, of the different aspects of Fayetteville, from parks to, to websites, to construction projects, a very good job, and, and this, this is the kind of thing I think Fayetteville needs, is, is this kind of interaction, this kind of information, you know, wish more people would take advantage of this, because, you know, this is, this is what a city is supposed to do, communicate, just like you guys have, and I think that's awesome. And, you know, all of us have been through kind of a, a heavy-duty four or five months, you know, and the cities, it, this, this divisive issue has kind of been intense for everybody. And it's time, I believe, and, and we sent the mayor a, a letter today, and city council, and just asked that maybe, you know, the talk, you know, Matthew Petty's put forth a proposal, Kit, Kit Williams had put forth a proposal for more ordinances, and what we're asking is to give everybody a break, give, give the citizens of Fayetteville a rest, it's time to enjoy the holidays, not talk about more ordinances. And what we're asking the mayor and, and the city council to do is next year, let's sit down and talk, not necessarily about an ordinance, but about issues, and, and start there, I think that's where it should have started a long time ago anyway, one reason it became a hotly contested issue is because there wasn't talk previous to the idea of ordinances, so, I just ask you, Mr. Mayor, would you consider that?
Well, I tell you what I will do, would you all like to meet with me? Everybody fair enough? You meet with me?
Yes.
I'll meet Mr. Campbell.
All right.
We'll set up a time.
Thank you very much.
And I'll be glad to meet with you, I want to hear from everybody. I know this, I know everybody's tired right now, I'm tired.
Yep.
But I think that, you know, reasonable people always find reasonable ways, I believe. We'll sit down, we'll talk, and we'll, I'll see what concerns that you have, and then we'll see what can be worked out, okay?
I think that's a good thing.
I don't mind at all.
I appreciate that. Talk is good, talk is first.
We.
Before we start getting into negotiating.
Absolutely.
Laws.
I'm good with that, anytime you all want to sit down with the mayor and talk to me, my door is open, I mean that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. What else do we have? Yes, darling?
I have a question for Connie, when is, when will the first stage of the regional park be completed, you're estimating?
It's fourteen to sixteen months.
Okay.
To complete phase one, which will start in March.
Well, that's just phase one.
Yes, I understand that. Could you comment on where you are with trails? Particularly on some of them that are not connected, how are, what are, I, I, you didn't say anything about what's the stage with the trails.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't talk about trails tonight, but certainly can, did you have one in particular, word for?
No, I just, we have a lot of trails that just kind of just.
Sure.
Are short little ones, and, just like, how are we moving along to connecting some of them now, my purpose is on, some of the ones on West Side, but there are a lot of the little short ones, it's like, are we going to start making a plan forward to start connecting them so that these little neighborhoods where have the short little ones, you can start connecting the neighborhoods.
Yeah, absolutely, the, the, this coming year, we're focusing for the most part on on kind of the southwest part of the city, connecting the Town Branch Trail and the Jollawee Trail, completing a loop through the south part of town to connect up some of those pieces of the trail. We also are working on design right now for the Cato Springs Branch Trail, which runs really from Cato Springs out to the regional park. All of those projects that I mentioned, the Walton Family Foundation, they really approached us, and they said, what other trails would you like to do, and how can we help? And so they're helping us with those. We'll be providing fifty percent of the funding for those projects. We also, looking out on this side of town, when we talk about Rupel Road, it will have a twelve-foot-wide trail on the west side of Rupel from one end to the other. So we'll be constructing it, and we'll be building it as part of the road, but it will be a trail connection. Claver Creek Trail, which is just north of here, is a piece that we would've had built already, but the permitting and the Corps of Engineers has been difficult through that segment between Salem and Rupel. It's one that, again, we would've had done by now. We're all ready to go as soon as we can get the permit. We've got the funding in place. We've actually got a grant from the Highway Department to build a bridge across Claver Creek along Salem. So that's a connection that we certainly want to make. We're looking at extending Shiloh Trail, which runs along the west side of 540, really from Sam's Club all the way down to MLK. That's one, over the next two to three years, we'll want to make that connection. So, yeah, we're working, you know, two to three miles every year, more in some cases. That connection, yeah, that one is probably a little further out. We need to do the, the Hamstring Creek Trail is one also. Now, when we build Rupel, I mentioned Rupel up north of here, near Mount Comfort. When we build that, when we put the bridge in there, we'll accommodate for a trail underneath there. But, yeah, we've got, you know, a long-term plan of a hundred miles of trails, so we've still got a long way to go. But it's budgeted every single year. We've got money coming in every year. And it's just a matter of trying to hit those priorities and making those connections. That's something that the mayor, when he came in, he said, you know, let's not go build it where it's easy just because we have the land or because it's an easy project to do. Let's actually make some connections. It takes a while, because, you know, we don't have a lot of funding, but we're working on all of those.
And the connectivity is important to me. That you just don't build a piece of trail here. It's like sidewalks. When you build a sidewalk, you need to, need to hook them up. And I mean, when I came into office, we'd have a piece of sidewalk maybe as far as from here to the end of the room, and then bare ground, then none, and hook up again. And I said, we gotta make connectivity. We gotta make connectivity with the trails. We'll have, help me out here, Chris, twenty-eight miles of trails on the ground by the end of this year? I wish we had Matt here, he could've. I just wasn't thinking we could've had a whole presentation on trails. But I'm big on that trail building and sidewalks. We triple sidewalk funding in this city, so. And we're going, we're starting in the schools, and we're gonna do half-mile radiuses around these schools where every child can walk safely to school. Because when I first came into office, I heard, we don't have the proper infrastructure. We don't have enough roads, we don't have enough sidewalks, we don't, you know, everybody wanted trails. And what I try to do is, I've got so much coming in, and I've got so much going out, and I gotta keep us between the road ditches. I can't overspend. And then there's services that need to be done, and it's a constant thing of, Paul and I, we, we talk about money almost every day. I mean, it's just part of, you gotta be a good money manager. And so I can't do everything at one time, but we do what we can with what we have, okay?
We appreciate you giving us some financial advice.
We've been able to submit some balanced budgets the last two or three years, and I'm telling you, in this day and time, that is not easy to do. Okay. What other question do we have? I got off on a little thing there. Yes, come on.
Paul, I wanted to ask you, do you have the amount that was spent on the special election?
Special election? I can't think of the top of my head. It's thirty or forty, it's somewhere. Yeah, I can't remember.
Thirty-three thousand, and that was something that wasn't budgeted.
I think it's somewhere in the forty thousand.
So that comes from just the.
That would come from, that would come from reserves, yes. Yes.
I just have a question for the financial wizard there.
Sure. Would you come to the mic, please?
Because we're filming, yeah.
We're gonna get you all on ready.
On the fuel costs for the city, we all know that fuel costs have been plunging lately. And I was wondering, one, were you already aware of some of this trend and had already estimated your fuel costs based upon the decline in that, in that area?
We'd estimated the fuel cost to be around, we keep around three dollars and thirty cents a gallon. Now, one of our challenges is not only the cost of fuel itself, but the usage costs. And of course, with the fire department answering more calls, and the police department's volume coverage is up too. So the usage is up, and it kind of offsets, but we kept it about three dollars and thirty cents. I was kind of uncomfortable with go too much under this. You never know what's gonna happen. As your awareness, we're all aware, things are happening in the Middle East that's certainly out of our control. We don't know what's gonna happen with fuel. We certainly hope that we do have decreases and keep the decreases. But we're not really comfortable right now of decreasing that too much.
Yeah, right. I just was wondering about, you know, that process. But if you estimated it at three-thirty, even though you're talking about calls being up, you could be realizing some savings a little bit on that. Do you have any idea what it might, what it could possibly be? Have you tried to think that out?
Oh, I would guess we might look in the hundred thousand dollar range or so. However, as I say, our usage continues to go up as the community expands, as we get more calls, the usage goes up. So we have to be very, very careful with that balance of what is our call volume gonna be, what is our, what are our expenditures for fuel gonna be as far as extra gallons in usage?
God willing, I won't call the police this year. So I hope, I hope to contribute, or the fire department. I just have one quick question for you, Mr. Mayor. Have you spoken to Kit Williams about his proposal or new ordinance?
I have not. I got that proposal today. And I have not really thoroughly looked it over. Same thing with Councilmember Petty's, that came in, I think that came in Thursday afternoon. Is that, is that correct, Blake? I don't want to put you on the spot here. But I think that came in Thursday afternoon, and I got a copy of that today. I've looked at his resolution, and I'm reading Kit's, but it was like ten pages, and I was a little bit strapped for time getting here, and I had several meetings today.
I was opposed to the ordinance that they all passed. My name's Ed Schimberg, by the way, so I wrote a couple of things.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
But I am not a bigot, okay? I'm almost sixty-six years old. I grew up in the San Francisco Bay Area in California. So I've had a lot of social interactions with homosexuals over the years. Lived in Dallas, lived at various places. So, you know, I'm not homophobic, so I don't worry about any of that part of it. But one thing that surprised me, because I really wasn't, I moved back up here. I went to school here earlier in the eighty-five, eighty-eight. Then I moved back up here last year in November. I lived down in Elveridge, Arkansas for a long time. But I say that to say this. I was really surprised that you moved that ordinance that was passed so fast without ever getting a smidgen, to use a president's word, a smidgen of evidence as to whether there really was, in legal fact, discrimination going on, or widespread discrimination going on against any group, be it the homosexual transgender group or any group. And no comp, I mean, no real legal evidence, in my view, as to how that ordinance impacted the constitutional rights which protect each and every one of us, okay? Because that was one of our main concerns. Anyway, I just, and I hope when we talk about this, all this stuff is gonna get thoroughly fleshed out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But the one-nineteen ordinance now has been voted on by the people and it's been repealed. Now, that does not mean, I want everybody to understand this, that does not mean a council member cannot bring another ordinance forward. They have that right as legislative branch in this city.
I figured they would, so.
Well, I didn't know one way or the other, but it has occurred. And the city attorney's written one up, and I haven't gotten through all of that, okay? You're welcome. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Collins? I know everybody by name tonight.
Michael Collins. In San Diego, we had walkover bridges so we could get over the interstate. And one of the things that really worries me, especially at Weddington, where I live there, you're driving on the ice, and on the side of the bridge, it's packed up and angry. And people are walking to get their bare necessities across this doggone bridge from the west side, on the east side, over to Walmart and all the infrastructure that's built on the west. And it really concerns me, is there anything, and speaking of the Weddington corridor also, maybe if we punch Shiloh through, or Salem, as a street, that might relieve a lot of the problems in that intersection we have. I mean, we're dealing with roundabouts, and, you know, I think a clover leaf is in order if we remain that high capacity in that intersection. As you all know, that's one of the biggest problems that we've got in areas as far as traffic goes. But is there plans to put walking bridges and things like that, like there is with the trails?
It's gonna be, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
I'm kind of interested in this stuff. Go ahead, Chris.
Well, first of all, that walkway is really not even, was not even intended to be a sidewalk in the first place. It's not wide enough. But if people walk it out of necessity, you can see the trails that people have made across there. So there's an obvious need for a better pedestrian access. The Highway Department, as I mentioned, that's one of the interchanges that they are gonna work on. They'll be totally rebuilding those bridges. And from a vehicular standpoint, the main thing that's gonna happen is if you are eastbound from the west side of Fayetteville, rather than turning left to get onto the highway, you'll be in the right lane and loop under the highway. That's called a loop ramp. So they're, they're planning to construct that. Now, what the city has asked for is, instead of bike lanes or a sidewalk on both sides, we want to take all of that space, put it in a, in a wide, twelve-to-sixteen-foot-wide pedestrian bicycle path on the north side of the road. Again, that's what we've requested, something we've still gotta work through with the Highway Department, and there's gonna be some resistance there. We've got some work to do with them. But we do feel like it is very important. And again, there's an obvious need, and so that's what we're looking at, what we're asking them for over the bridge. And to continue that all the way on the north side of Weddington, most likely, what we're gonna see with that particular project is Weddington widened all the way to Salem to six lanes, three lanes in each direction. So we'd be asking for a trail on the north side of Weddington when they do that widening. So it's an extensive project. It's a twenty-million-dollar project, just that interchange. And so what we've encouraged the Highway Department is, you're spending twenty million dollars, let's do it right for all the users that are out there. And we're optimistic, but there's still some work to be done to get that in place.
And keep in mind, that Rupel Road is so important because on the west side of town, it's gonna, where the smokehouse is, it's gonna go straight to Mount Comfort. And that's gonna be huge. I don't have enough money to go all around. And that's gonna be constructed, a four-lane boulevarded road with ten feet of green space and a sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk, that's gonna have a bike lane and then ten feet of green space and a sidewalk, five feet wide. So you're gonna be able to take a car, and that's the reason we're doing Zine, because that's the top part of, you've heard the, does anybody remember the box that everybody laughed at me about? Well, that's a reality now. Everybody thought that was a foolish thing. And I said, we're gonna build this box. So what we have now, we've got two sixty-five completed. We're working on Sixteenth to Fifteenth Street, go to MLK, or you can go all the way around to MLK. And then it's gonna, at the smokehouse, it's gonna go straight. And if I could get enough money, we'd go around to one-twelve and take it on to the airport. But it's gonna hook up right there. It's, it's gonna hook up about where you go to the Sam's Club, and then Van Ash is gonna take you right into the mall. And then if you want to, you can get on Zine and go all the way back to two sixty-five and go all the way around the city. You can walk, ride a bike, drive a car, or take a bus. That is gonna completely change the whole face of this city when that's completed. And we've done that just, that was just out of sure determination and a great staff.
And to answer your, the second part of your question, yes, both of those streets that you mentioned, both Shiloh and Salem, are on the city's master street plan.
Yep.
And they're projects that, you know, as development occurs, we'll be looking at extending. They're on priority lists that will be considered for future funding. They didn't make this bond program, there were other needs. So certainly, we recognize that, that one of the big problems with that congestion in the area is the lack of alternate routes. And so that's something that we're looking at. It's just a matter of priorities and getting that to rise to the top.
Well, guess which road we use instead of Salem or Shiloh?
Yep. That's why we gotta build that road.
One thing, too, that staff does a great job, we have these, particularly the large infrastructure problem, projects, a lot of infrastructure projects. If you go on the website and click on projects, you can see, you know, Jeremy was talking about with the parking deck. You can see the stash, you can see some pictures and all, and the road projects, sidewalk projects, et cetera.
Well, we've got about time for one more question, then we, yes?
I have another question. My name is Albertson. I've lived here for a long time. Long time, long enough to know that you are doing a great job, and I appreciate it all the time. You know, I see you guys, I see you guys work for it. And I appreciate what you've done and the way it's changed the city. It's a gentler kind of place to live, I think, by now than it was in the sixties. But anyway, I always, I didn't care about some things in the sixties. I do care then about things now. And what I care about now, and everybody in this room cares about, is the value of their home, and the things that happen in our environment, our social environment, it changes the value of property. I live in a single-family residential area by me. And there are people in my neighborhood at University Heights, my neighborhood, who believe. I have stated that we have over occupancy. We have people buying houses and stuffing them full of their kids. I live next to four people, but they have big parties. And when I call it on, I get the extrude. I get here in the yard, I get verbal threats, I get cranks. Somebody told me the other day, you've been cranked. Well, I don't understand it. People come to my house, stay for a few days, working the dogs, they want to get away. I didn't mind it so much, I spent it on a walk wall. Happy to stand on top of people. Unfortunately, they'll kill me, watch me cry, which they can see beautiful pictures of the dogs. Supposedly, I'm getting away. Phone number, just had this, knew my name, it wasn't hard to leave. As little I know about law, you don't have to be able to prove that in a court of law for it to be true. So I believe I do know. I'm tired of living next to these drugs, these students, these party goers. And they are increasingly taking away from the ambiance of University Heights, which is one of the reasons I moved. I had built two houses on Market Hill, and I moved to this particular house, and I built this particular house a decade ago, because I read city ordinances. A long word, I believe, the law. And in the city ordinances, it says, no more than three unrelated people are to live in the house.
You're correct.
It's against the law. It is being done. I can point to sixteen, I walked down three streets, garden, park, and a pond. Little bit of market, little bit of pots. I made very little effort, and I got dozens of signatures just simply saying, we're tired of this. Would you look into it, enforce the law? Our property values are dropping. tired of this. Would you look into it, enforce the law? Our property values are dropping." And the University Heights lists are, and the people who comment on it, there's been the opinion that Kit Williams has no interest in enforcing that ordinance, which is a shame. Because, you know, when we start picking and choosing the laws that you're going to enforce, I'm in the wrong country, and I suggest that you would think about moving maybe to a different city. It's ridiculous. Now, I don't mind being that, and I don't mind being called things. I've been with you for a long time.
I'm kind of used to that myself.
I'm quite used to that, yes. And I'd be having this conversation with you, but I've been by your office a couple of times, and you obviously doing your job somewhere else. No worries. This is not a great big concern, as big a concern as others have. But I chose to build two houses on that hill. I've seen the property values go down when they should be going up. Nobody wants to live next to half a dozen, or four, or five students. There's some beautiful girls moved down in the corner of Palmer and Sawyer Lane, which is very close to me. Wonderful girls, and at least half a dozen boyfriends for each of them, and they have parties, and they're loud enough, I can hear them. Heck, the other night, I called the police because I couldn't hear the news, because of the party that was going across the other side of an eight-foot privacy fence, which I built, which I've been slated for. So the point is, property values. I looked at it. I read the ordinances. I presumed that the law was going to protect my investment. This is not the case. This has not been the case. And I, excuse me. This reminds me, my wife and I wanted me to say, "Hey, don't worry about these new ordinances that have been all in the group of hire lately. Enforce the ordinances that you have before you make any more." Again, I got, I got dozens of signatures on a petition, and I gave them to Rhonda and the other fellow. I don't know what happened to them.
Okay.
I think it was a fore meeting, and I said, "I still have this," we know where your concerns are."
So you gave some petitions to your council members?
Yeah. I wanted to talk to people who, you know, they're university professors, "Hey, I'm HML." I'm HML.
Eighteen.
But the point is, they don't only have the, oh, they're fairly left, they're down in the street, these ones, a lot of the professors that live up and down, University Heights, are gone, and so they're taken in the door, and I don't see that that should match it. Even one of those people who's doing something, they're gone. They get one vote. We all had one vote, not disagreeing with all the others.
Okay.
We know that that's all, this one vote. You know, it's the, I mean, I don't know that, you don't get any attention or more attention.
I know that, I know that Jeremy's in charge of that department. Yolanda reports to you.
Who is?
Yolanda reports to Jeremy.
The city attorney. Co-compliance.
Okay. This is one of the worst you, um-
Chad?
Chad, yeah, Chad, listen very well. I, I kind of am. My wife, bless her heart, works at the Veterans Administration Hospital, and we get up at 4:00, and she gets off to work, and I walk the blocks, and I see houses with four to six cars in the garage. So it's easy for me. I have taken pictures of these cars, including the license plates, because I have seen the police look at the license plate and find out where that person lived and called that person's house. That's all I ask them to do, to look at the pictures and look at the license plates and find out which people live there. The trick is, they just turn in a paper with three names on it, and then they smoke somebody in. So it's hard, crude.
It is very difficult.
But I'm giving my council members, black, no, I use color, pictures of cars, license plates, parking for the houses at 4:30 in the morning. What do you need? What do you need? Call those numbers, find out who those people are, find out where they say they live, and enforce the law, and give me back some safety. The university has paid almost a billion dollars for a property smaller than mine. Why? Because it's a party house, but it's across from the fellow house. That means one vote, too.
Robert, we need to, we're supposed to be out of the room.
You did just a lot of-
I do, I do, and Jeremy will certainly look into it. If you have pictures, bring them by the office. I'll be glad to look at them with you.
I'm sorry.
Bring your pictures by the office. I'll be glad to look at them with you.
We need to get it-
I'm sorry I wasn't there.
Get it in the correct system. Get it to coding courts.
You can see me. You've known me a long time.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll do that. I'll take another walk in the morning. I don't know what happened to those pictures.
Okay.
You might have asked, uh-
Alan Long?
Yeah, but, I'll go.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you all. We're out of time.
We're out of time.
Okay, thank you. Where's Jared?